Good afternoon. Thank all of you for being here. Today is March 7, 2023. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this work session to order tonight. We'll start off with the invocation and then following that we'll do the pledge. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for today. Lord, we thank you just for another opportunity, Lord, to be able to do count and business. Lord, please govern us tonight. Come in, touch our hearts, our mind, give us the understanding, give us the wisdom and the knowledge to do what's right in your sight. Father, we thank you so much. Bless everyone that's here. Bless the ones that's on their way and their families, God. We so thank you. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Shayna, if you would, please come on up. Guys, I also want to remind everyone, if you're speaking tonight, if you could, please speak into the microphones so that everyone can hear you clearly. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. This afternoon, we're going to do just a brief work session as requested. Let's look at the ordinance for off-street parking. This, whatever is that a board, you know, is comfortable with this afternoon will be presented to the Planning Commission in two weeks. Then it comes back before the board for a vote in April. So we won't be voting tonight necessarily. So it is Division 515 in our zoning ordinance, Section 515-010, general requirements. And we're making amendments or proposing changes or amendments to Number 5, which deals with commercial vehicles in residential zonings. This table is taken from the ordinance of that section, 515-010-5, where we look at the types of vehicles. And in the first category, it tells us which vehicles are allowed. And these vehicles, you can actually park in your driveway, you know, in your yards. You're allowed one commercial vehicle and one recreational vehicle. And the vehicles are included would be things like pickup trucks, passenger vans, duly trucks, and so on. And I have pictures of examples here. So this is a pickup with, it could be with or without a logo. So without, now we have one with a logo. And then we have the vans and so on that, you know, could, are possibly allowed. And you can, again, you can park these in your driveway. You're not restricted as to the location on your property where you can park them, and the lot sizes are not restricted. The second class of vehicles we have, these are commercial vehicles, which would include the vans and the pickup trucks with outside storage. It also includes things like tractors, mowers, things used for property maintenance, and emergency vehicles. And we just tried to provide examples, not necessarily with all the tires, but trying to find one without. But if you've got like your ladders on the vehicles or any other kind of, you know, outside storage on your vehicles, you won't be able to bring your tires home here. But these can be parked on your property, but they have to be in the side or rear as specified in the ordinance. And what I've done here is amended the section where before it was only allowed on one to 10 acres. So we have removed that restriction. So you'll be able to, if you've got less than an acre, you'll be able to park, to park these types of vehicles. Again, not with the tires. I couldn't find one without. But it'll have to be to the rear and/or to the side of the home. If you're on a corner lot, you have to conceal it with a hedge or a fence or something from that corner view. And so this is what we're proposing, the change we're proposing for this one, because we find that a lot of residents may have less than an acre, but they will have maybe, you know, a van with, you know, a ladder on it, you know, for their profession. So we thought that this would be a reasonable adjustment. And then the third type of vehicle we have would be the Type 3. These are your large vehicles or moving equipment where you would need 10 or more acres. And we've provided, you know, just pictures of examples. These are not all-inclusive. I would just to give you an idea. And it includes the buses, bucket trucks, vehicles over 26,000 pounds, you know, and larger vehicles. It does not, you still won't be able to park 18-wheelers because in the subdivisions, because generally the roads aren't, you know, built to sustain those vehicles anyway. And, you know, they are large. So those will not be allowed in residential zonings at all. But these here, you have to be 100 feet off of your property line, and then you have to screen them. So, and by that, we mean they have to be in a structure, whether it's like a garage or something like that. And this is just graphic showing what we mean by the front yard. So the front yard is anywhere behind the front plane of the home. In this case, the garage is the wall, the furthest wall is sticking out. And then your side yards and the rear yard. And if you've got like a storage area, like a garage or something, that is an option for you to park one of those vehicles, because you're only allowed one commercial, one residential. We do have exceptions as currently stated in the ordinance, right? It does not apply to law enforcement vehicles or any temporary vehicles, like loading, offloading, if you're moving, like a moving truck. You know, you're allowed to have that to come to offload your items, and then it leaves. Law enforcement vehicles are exempt from the provisions in the ordinance. So I have not, in speaking with the Sheriff's Office, they have offered also a proposal, you know, for an amendment. I didn't include it in the initial amendments provided, but I wanted it to be a topic of discussion tonight for the board to determine if this is a change, you know, that we're ready to make. So right now, we exempt law enforcement vehicles. One of the things we've encountered is that the Sheriff's Office, and this memo was sent to the board, they employ wrecker vehicles, which would be Class 3, that, you know, are not allowed on smaller residential lots. And this is a proposal that the Sheriff's Office has, you know, provided to us for the board to consider, where he would like to include vehicles certified by the sheriff to be on the Newton County wrecker rotation I don't know if these actually qualify them as law enforcement vehicles. This is why I'm bringing it before here for discussion. And we also have to consider if it's something, you know, that staff can, you know, manage, you know, to regulate something like that, to determine, you know, which vehicles are going to be a part of the program or not. So that would be some of the challenges that I've put in before the board for consideration tonight. I think those are the main changes we are proposing. I'm gonna take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Shayna. Guys, remember, when you had questions or if you're talking tonight, please speak into the microphone. So Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Shayna. So let me ask you this. What I've seen recently is, because I've taken, I've been, I've tried to be more perceptive of some of these vehicles, right? And what I've seen recently is the vehicles that they're parking, no matter the class, they're commercial vehicles, obviously, but they are going past their driveway and create their driveway proper and creating a new, like, service entrance, if you will, to their, to their property. And one I noticed this morning in my neck of the woods was they're cutting, actually cutting across a D cell lane to do it, which I know is probably not right under any circumstances. But, so, I think we'll have to watch for that. I wanna, I want to, I'm glad we're seeing this. You know, we talked about this, what, two or three weeks, a month ago?
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad you bring these proposals up. But I want to ask this question again. Do, do these regulations or these proposed changes supersede homeowners association rules or?
Yes, sir. The ordinance does. We don't regulate HOA rules and confidences, but-
But can the, but your homeowners association can be more restrictive, right?
They could. They would have to enforce that on their own, though. We can only regulate what the ordinance dictates.
Yeah, I worded that wrong. So I guess my question was, this, these are the minimum requirements, but the homeowners association can set up more stringent requirements subject to their enforcement, correct?
Yes, sir. They can.
All right. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Shayna, let me, let me ask you this. And when we went over this the other day, I was okay with it. But when I, when you showed it just a few minutes ago, I got a couple, I got a concern about District 3 and District 2. So if you can go back to the side yard-
The Class 3 and 2?
The side yard. When you showed the picture of the side yard?
Yeah.
So there's homes in District 2 and District 3 that are relatively close, like silos, places like that. So when you say parking on the side, how would that work for, because we want to make it fair for, if we're gonna change it, we want to make it fair for everybody. You know what I mean? So how would we make it fair for those residents that have those homes that are really close like that?
So if they don't have much of a side yard, a rear yard would be an option as well. I mean, how the ordinance is currently worded, unless, you know, we want to do a change to to that.
Well, I just, my concern, I want to make sure it's fair across the board. That's all. Well, anything, anything that we use for side yard, if you look at the silos, I used to live in the silos. So if you look at the silos, that side yard right there, that won't be, I mean, that won't be efficient for, for parking if you, if you put a larger vehicle right there. And I know for a fact, there's, I'm in there every other day. So I know there's people that will want to park their vehicles, the larger vehicles right there. So they would have to go to the rear.
That would probably be the better option for them if they don't have a, because some yards are also narrow, but, you know, they may not have much of a side yard, but they may have a big backyard. So they do have the option.
What about townhomes?
Yeah. Well, this won't apply to townhomes.
Okay.
Yeah. This will be single-family residential zonings. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders.
So you mentioned the rear and like Chairman Baines was stating, I know in the enclave there's no parking on the side and, and-
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out if you say they're parking in the back. Like, I have a corner lot, so I can park on the side in the back because I have a corner lot. But for those parking in the back, do they have to build like a roadway? Are they gonna be going on the grass? That's my concern. Walk on the grass to park in the backyard? Because some will try it. That's what I'm saying. Do we have to put something in place? Or are you gonna leave that strictly up to the HOA?
They would have to do some kind of a gravel drive if they need to create an additional driveway.
Okay.
We do have driveway permits, you know, that the county reviews as well, to avoid them, you know, getting onto the grass and, you know, leaving ruts in the grass and making it muddy when it rains and so on. So they are allowed to like do a gravel driveway to extend their drive to the rear, to get around to the back of the home.
So they are required to have some type of driveway, not driving the grass?
They would be.
So is that gonna be written in here so that can be specified? Because I could see people just driving in the backyard.
We could. I do believe we have it in other places in our ordinance, but we can absolutely add it here just for clarification.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So Applewhite, so there will be a gravel drive required for rear parking. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, sir. So what we, some, some folks would do, like for this yard, for instance, they are wide enough. And when they can apply to have an additional driveway. And usually that is reviewed by the Transportation Department to make sure that the curb cuts or adequate or their space apart, you know, equally.
And that's for side yard as well? Is that-
Yes, if they need to get, but let's just say they'd get to the storage center here, you know. They have the option, if they have enough space and it's enough, oh, is that me or you? Sorry. All right. So if there's, you know, enough room between where the next driveway is, usually, it depends on the speed limit. It'll tell you how far apart your driveways need to be. It varies with the speed limit. So this is why the Transportation Department would review our driveway permits, to determine if it's something they can do. The other option is also coming off this way, you know, from the side. And this is a short driveway, but they're usually a little longer. So, you know, just extending it back that way, provided that they don't have a septic or anything here. I mean, this is just like a schematic drawing, a typical-
I think it's gonna be very important we spell all this out letter for letter.
Yeah. But that is currently in place right now. They would have to apply for a driveway permit.
So I want to, before we go any further, I want to make sure that the board is okay with enforcing a, a citizen to put a driveway next to their, their home. To me, that's, that's a bit touchy, because it's just a bit, it's a bit touchy. But I want to make sure this board is okay with doing that first.
What if I made, Chairman?
I had Commissioner Mason, and then I had, I had you. But go ahead now.
Yeah. So like I said, the driveway permits have to be reviewed for approval. It doesn't mean like every single one, you know, they're gonna get to do that.
Has to have one. Okay.
It has to be reviewed for approval.
So I think that what Commissioner Edwards was saying, we need to make sure we spell that out. If it's not, if it's not required, then we need to make sure we let people know that. But if the board is making it a requirement, then we need to let people know that as well. But I had Commissioner Mason, then I got Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So are we specifying a difference between a concrete driveway and a gravel driveway? Or are those one and the same?
No, they are different kinds, but usually on private property, if it's, they are allowed to have gravel driveways. I know in most subdivisions, it would be the concrete or the pavement. But the ordinance does allow, especially if it's like on miscellaneous parcel, like a land out in AR zoning, they're required to pave the apron, which is this area off the road here, so that they don't damage the actual road when they turn off. But, you know, so houses that are out in agricultural residential zoning or not in a subdivision, most of them would have a gravel driveway the rest of the way. But they are, some of them will pave all their driveways. They have that option too. But they must pave the apron, which is this area here. So not, so it's not to damage the road.
Right.
And that is currently in our ordinance.
Okay. Because I've kind of seen a little bit of both. I've even seen it where, you know, from where you were talking about the apron area, I've seen it where it was paved and then up, it was paved all the way to the side yard. And then once it got to the rear yard, it was just gravel in the back where the vehicle can park in the gravel area. So I didn't know if we were trying to specify if it's okay, if they didn't want to do concrete driveway all the way through the side yard to the rear yard, that they can at least do gravel to prevent, I guess, damage to the yard. I mean, I don't know if that, if we would want to require that, or if it would be up to that individual on the side, do they want to tear their grass up? Or, you know, make it look nice by putting gravel or concrete down?
Yes. If they're doing driveway, sir, they would be required to put some kind of material down, whether it's gravel or pavement. But they have to pave the apron portion.
Right.
And after that, they can choose either gravel, which is sort of affordable material for like especially single, individual homes. Yeah, they have the option. That is currently in our ordinance, which is why we have the driveway permit for, to be reviewed by our staff.
Okay. And then one last question. So the, the smaller vehicles that we were talking about in the, I think it was the ones that you were talking about that had, you had the Class 1s. Now these, they can be parked in the front yard, is what you're saying?
Yes, as long as they don't have any equipment on them.
No equipment. So they can't have a ladder? It can't have-
None of the bucket arms, yeah. Or like the children's park too, yeah. Those they can't have in front.
So if it does have a ladder or some type of equipment on it, then it needs to be in the side yard or the rear?
Or the rear.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, I do want to say this as she get ready to speak. Guys, concrete is like $260 a yard now. Yeah, it really is. Yeah. Commissioner Sanders.
That was gonna be my comment, probably put in a language which, which ever is most economical. I don't know. Patrick probably can let us know what we could probably put in there. But the question that I had, you brought about the ladder. So if the ladder is not, if it's on top of the vehicle and about the length of the vehicle is not affecting anything around it, so just explain to me why they can't have a ladder on top?
Because it is considered to be outside storage. Like you were talking about the first, the white van there.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So those are the things that we consider to be outside storage as opposed to the, you know, the ones in the previous ones. And then these are like the box trucks that you have here and, you know, the big vehicles. So-
So is that affecting anything, why they don't want the ladder on top? Or we don't want the ladder on top? Is it affecting something, the environment or surround? That's what I'm trying to get explanation of why that is a part of the stipulations.
It would be, for one thing, just the aesthetics it gives that gives more of a commercial look in a residential area.
Okay.
Right? And we don't, I mean, this is a short ladder, you know, because you don't want to get them to have to restrict the length of ladders now or, you know, what size ladders they can put on there. So those things are all considered, like the cage on this one here, or, you know, some of them having the bucket arms, those are all considered outside storage or equipment on the vehicles. And those would put them in Class 2.
Okay.
Which has to be in the rear of the yard.
And lastly, can you go back to the picture of the house with the storage? Okay. So you said they are able to have two vehicles, correct? You said one-
They're allowed one recreational and one commercial vehicle.
Okay. So if they have a side storage, I'm just gonna, I'm playing devil's advocate here. If they have a side storage, what's the difference, what would be the stipulation or what would be an issue if they happened to put one vehicle in that storage and one in the driveway? Because it's hidden.
The ordinance currently allows them to do that.
Oh, allow, okay. I just want to make sure.
So they can currently do that, yeah. So we didn't change that.
Okay.
Yeah. If you're gonna have more than the two, then you've got to put them in storage.
Okay.
In a garage or something, yeah, or a huge barn or shed, depending on what you have on their property.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're saying it has to be inside the storage building?
Yes, sir. If it's more than one, or if it's like a Class 2, yeah, you're only allowed one of each. If you've got, like, you know, two commercials, one of them would have to go into the storage area in your yard, or you'd have to park it elsewhere.
Or in the rear, yeah.
Or can they park it in the rear? One in the front, one in the back?
No. So you're allowed one commercial, one recreation. If you have two commercials, you have to park, you can park one. The extra one will have to go into your storage area. You're only allowed to have, you know, one in your side or rear yard. If you have multiples, you have to put them into a garage or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's how it's currently written. So we didn't change that.
Anyone else? Patrick, you have anything?
I want to make sure that the board is clear. If someone is parking their whichever class, say Class 2 vehicle in their side yard, are they required to have a driveway or a concrete or gravel pad? Or are they permitted to park, to drive over and park on the grass?
For a concrete pad, it is preferred. They could do, usually they have, usually we have them do a gravel area where they can park it so it doesn't damage the dirt. They would need to have some kind of a driveway to get back there. So yes.
The driveway would have to be concrete, gravel, or some other surface. The parking pad itself would be up to, up to discussion at the review stage, is that?
Yes.
So Shayna, so most, most people who have those vehicles, they pull in their driveway, and they either gonna go left in their grass, or they're gonna go right in their grass, and they gonna park their vehicle. So you're saying, because I want to make sure the board understand, and if, if it's something that we need to make a decision on tonight, we need to make a decision on. So you're saying if they do that, they are required to have some type of pad, whether it be gravel or concrete?
Yeah. Most people will put down gravel because it's more affordable, right? And that prevents issues later on, you know, with any kind of erosion or anything like that. So that is something, you know, that you, and especially if you're leaving it going to, like, say your storage areas at the side of your home, most people will go ahead and just have that in there and have that additional extension of their driveway. So some of them may come off the side here. If it's a long enough driveway, they'll just, instead of creating a whole new one off the road, they'll come off the side and just, you know, extend like a gravel driveway to their storage area. And we, that is allowed. We do allow that.
So they are, with this new ordinance, they will be required to do that. That's what, that's what we need to know.
And that is something we can put in place if the board would like.
But it's not, right now, it's not required.
Right. Not required, but unless they're building a new driveway. If they're just coming off the side, you know, they can do the gravel. If they're doing a new driveway, yes.
So let me ask you this. That way we'll know. So if it's, if they, they're doing that, and we're not, we're not giving out citations or nothing like that for it, right? If it's not gravel there or concrete?
If there's not gravel, where, sir?
On the side yard.
You mean currently, right now?
Well, if we-
Or if you do it moving forward. It depends what we put in place tonight. So if it's something, if we're gonna require them, I know, so it's a two-part question. If they're doing a new driveway, then they have to do all of that. Sometimes they'll come off the side here to get in, you know, there.
Only if they doing a new driveway? Okay.
We can do that, yeah. We can do it that way too, yeah. They have to do the gravel down with a new driveway.
I got you.
Or concrete, whichever they prefer.
I got you. Commissioner Mason.
So I was gonna ask too, and it may be beneficial to at least, because I know concrete is pretty expensive, to at least have some gravel, because if you're driving a heavier type of commercial vehicle, it's a possibility that vehicle could get stuck.
Yeah. That's why most people put gravel down, yeah.
Right. Once you get it back there. So it would probably be a great idea to kind of have it at least gravelled or some type of driving pad if it's not concrete, if concrete isn't affordable for that resident, so that if you do drive it on your side yard or your rear yard, you're able to drive it out and you're not stuck and you can't get it out. And then secondly, with this presentation that you just shared with us, is it a possibility that we can actually get this? Because I think some of the slides were missing from what we had here.
Some of the slides are missing?
Yes.
Which?
I think, like, we didn't have this photo that you just had up.
Oh, yeah. No, this is just for demonstration purposes. I could provide a PowerPoint. That's okay.
That would be excellent.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I would love to kind of just share it from a digital perspective, if possible.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just for demonstration, but yeah, I can actually get that for you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So tonight, we're looking for what? Because, and I asked that question because I know Ms. Applewhite said this is going to the P&amp;Z board, right?
It's gonna go to the Planning Commission this month.
And-
And then come back before the board in April.
And I'd be most interested, interested to understand their input or maybe suggestions they have, because we haven't seen all of it. We haven't thought of all the issues that are gonna, this is gonna cause. I would really like to know what their input is and take into consideration their input.
So it's gonna go to the planning board, and then it gonna come back to the board, and you're gonna present what their findings are, right?
Absolutely, yeah. If they make any recommendations, yes.
Yeah. And then the board will have an opportunity to, to make changes at that point. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Sanders.
This kind of pertains to what we're speaking on, but I know I attended a meeting with a group of HOA members. And we were, the state, the statement is in regards to off-street parking. Now, talking about off-street parking, do we have something in place in regards to really off-street parking, like for instance, in various areas and subdivisions and so forth? Because that was an issue in regards to a lot of people living in subdivisions, about people parking on the streets. So do we have, are y'all gonna address that as well? Do we have an ordinance in place in regards to that?
So our ordinance currently, we only regulate, like our department would regulate off-street parking in the overlays only currently. And in the other areas outside of the overlays, that's actually the Sheriff's Office.
So the shit, inside of the subdivisions as well? The sheriff will man the ones inside?
If they're outside of the overlay. So we, just the overlays, like Salem Overlay, Brickstore and Almond, in those overlays, our code enforcement department, we can regulate street parking there. But outside of that, it, you know, that falls under the sheriff's jurisdiction. It's actually in the code of ordinance. It's not in the zoning ordinance, just the ones in the overlay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Guys, I see the motion that we adjourn. The motion by Commissioner, I'm sorry.
So we're still, we're okay with these changes is, okay?
We want to send them back to the planning, planning zone and then bring them back, I mean, the planning board, and then bring it back to the board so we can see what their findings are. And then we'll make decisions then. All right. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.